It is Monday, December 2nd at 7:30, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Here.
Terry?
Here.
Stingline?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Chesak?
Here.
O'Day?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none? Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yes, the consent calendar is adopted. Item six is presentations. Let's see, let me switch to the correct agenda. First presentation, Brainerd Public Utilities Operating Capital Budget Presentation. Mr. Evans, who's presenting that?
That's an excellent question.
I think it's Danny Locke, but I didn't want to presume after my last time's mistakes. All right. Danny Locke?
Can everybody hear me from back here?
No.
Okay. I'll do it from back here so I can control the computer as well, so poor Sean doesn't have to follow my thought process here.
Is he on the mic?
Yeah, does a mic pick him up? Can we move? Does that mic reach back?
I can hear me.
I think he's on the mic.
Yeah, crank it up.
Can you hear me now? Is this better? Okay. So what was presented in the packet is the budget of both the operating budget for 2025 as well as a five-year capital plan. That was included in your packet. The, similar to how this has been presented in the past, you've seen both the capital, the first couple pages of the budget, and then the operating budget follows. When we look into the operating budget, that's showing the, or excuse me, the capital budget, that is showing the five-year capital plan, I wanted to highlight some changes in numbers that we saw with updated engineering estimates from what was presented in last year's capital improvement plan, one being the lighting system improvements, now at $700,000 in '26 and '27. That is for the 210 project. Those were updated numbers. I believe they were at $250,000 per year, and they're now at $700,000 with the increase in costs that we're seeing. The Digger Derrick truck was up $90,000 from what was previously presented. The items highlighted, so the downtown substation, there was $100,000. The bucket truck had $160,000. The operations pickup at $50,000. These are all carryover numbers that were in 2024 that were not spent, and I brought them forward in '25 to be transparent on items that carried forward. And then we also had updated numbers from the hydro generation project. That project presented with numbers last year at about a $9.7 million price tag. With the updated numbers that we just received from the engineers, we are showing the high number that they estimated was 14.5, so I included that all in the capital budget. That was presented and approved by commission this last meeting. The caveat being, these projects are going to need to be funded, and that's whether, that's through bonding or rate increases. We have, with the hydro project, we have reached out to the state, and the state is getting back on some direct funding support that they have for hydro generation projects. That was, that request was just under $10 million, and we expect to find out information on that as the legislator closes this next session, so we should know in May of 2025. When looking at this electric budget, the commission approved the budget with the least amount of increases in rate payer costs as we go across all five years and when we move to different divisions. In looking at the electric department, the estimated increase in rates to achieve the budget that is presented and approved was 1% in 2025, 3% in '26, '27, and a 2% in 2028. The 2029 total, I see, did not print on the amounts that you guys were presented with. That was $2,210,250. That is the electric and hydro generation capital plan that was approved by commission. Moving on to the water department and the capital plan from '25 through 2029, the update, significant updates in the water department were related to the city water main projects that are ongoing, and the updated numbers we received from the engineering department this year. What we've noticed in our project costs are these project costs have doubled, if not tripled, in some cases as we look from the, for the five-year plan from what was presented at last year's budget. When commission discussed and saw the reclamation and backwash project that's happening down at the central water treatment plant, that project was budgeted for $6.5 million in '25 and 2026. Bids opened at over $10 million. The commission decided they wanted to postpone that project and allow us to look for additional funding. We have received already a direct appropriation of $5 million. Lowest bid on the project was 10.3. We are still assessing those bids at this time, and more information will follow at the next council meeting.
Yep. Gary, can we ask you a question? Go ahead, Gary.
How long do we have to spend that $5 million from state bonding for that project?
We have to have a contract be started by the end of 2027.
Seven?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
President, Danny, when you talk about, you've got $5 million secured for that wastewater treatment facility?
Correct.
That's through bonding?
It's a direct appropriation.
Thank you. So they just give us the money? There, I mean, direct appropriation, tell me?
Correct.
You just say, yeah, here's $5 million Brainerd Public Utilities and use it for that facility? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
It's written into the state law.
Okay.
For us to receive that funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? No?
Do you anticipate that being on the next agenda for the public utilities? Because you said to have more information at the next meeting here, which is on the 16th.
There'll be additional information coming at city council meeting with the bid updates. So we're getting additional information from the engineering, Bolton and Mank, and will present additional information at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
As it relates to the assessment of the bids. Two things to note that we, that were added in 2024 here for 2025. One is the lead service line replacements. That is the efforts from the state and environmental protection agency federally to eliminate lead within the drinking water system. So large lead service line replacements, those are required for the utility to perform and complete within the next 10 years. Funding for those lead service line replacements, we are told, will be available starting in 2026 and moving forward. So we added, at the commission meeting approved, we're estimating that'll be between $3 and $4 million per year over the next 10 years, starting in 2026. That has been added to the budget as a line item that was not on last year's. Additionally, provisions for a new water plant have been added, starting in that 2029 timeframe. As we get into the funding sources and what that means for the utility in general is we will need to either bond or raise rates to continue with these projects. Commission had decided, they are instructed staff to come up, what is the least impactful on the rate payers, and what does that look like? With this budget, we are going through the rate study, but our estimates are a 9% increase in rates in '25, 15% in '26, '27's a 23%, '28 13%, and 13% in '29 as well. That is primarily due to the lead service line replacements and funding that we will need for those, as well as the water projects coming off of the bonding that we just issued. Those are where we came up with those estimates. Moving into the wastewater plant, when we look at what was presented in 2024 and moving into what we have now for '25 through 2029, there were not as many significant adjustments in the wastewater plant. There was still the storage tank biosols upgrades. This $24.5 million was there, presented last year. We had carryovers, so some GBT control panels in the gravity belt thickener, and then the hydro dehumidifiers, as well as this main lift heated air exchanger and the lift station improvements. Those are all items that were on 2024's budget and carried forward into 2025.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
Danny, when you talk about the previous, just before this last item, you talk about the rate increases projected. What specific rates are you referring to?
That would have been the water rates.
Okay.
Related to the water budget, that would have been the water rates.
Exclusively.
Okay, thank you. As we look at the wastewater improvements, as Jeff mentioned, looking at rates. So for wastewater rates to achieve the plan as presented and approved by commission, there'd be a 2% increase in rates estimated for 2025. '26 would be a 20% and a 30% in 2027. '28, '29 would be 16% to 18%. These rate increases are all estimates at this time, but commission wanted council to be aware of the potential of rate increases and what that looks like. We are currently going through rate studies to determine and finalize those numbers.
President Bevins?
Yep.
Mr. Chesak?
Danny, when you talk about those rates now, that's for the treatment rate, right?
Correct.
Okay, not, not water or anything else, just treatment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, anything to add from the capital side?
No, you've covered it fairly well there, Danny.
Any questions from council before moving on to the operations for 2025?
Nope.
I would say that at commission meeting, staff, I thought it was kind of remarkable. They provided three capital improvement project budgets. One was essentially worst-case scenario. This one, and then another, what would you call that? The one in the middle, so to speak, I believe?
That was if we required full, I had one where it was worst-case scenario, we didn't have any funding, what that might look like for rates. One, if we had full bonding for everything without any, with the known grant funding we have now. And then this one had anticipated grant funding for the lead service line replacements, which led to the lowest rate projections.
So, so the reason I'm mentioning that is because it was, they, they had their choice in what to present to the council, and it's, it's, it's very revealing to see without the funding that you hope for, what the anticipated rate increases would be enormous, absolutely just unbelievable rates. So we got to count on funding for all this stuff. It's so important. So I'm finished on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
With the 2025 operating budget that was approved by commission, significant increases in utility revenues related to the crypto miners and the additional consumption that the crypto miners have, as well as the increase in the purchase power needed for that, as it's just a direct pass-through. We have, in the operations budget, what we have is combined in all departments on the, it's page 59 of your packet, but presented on here. This is combined all departments that include, or divisions, that includes the electric, hydro, water, and wastewater. There was approximately a 20% increase in expenditures anticipated from 2024's budget to 2025. That is, 70% of that relates to the purchase power for that increase in the consumption, and then 15% of that relates to salaries, wages, and I'll get into how that comes about. There's an offsetting increase for those expenditure increase, so that 20.8% increase in expenditures. There's an offsetting 20% increase in overall revenues anticipated in the budget as well. The electric division is estimated to have a 2022% increase in revenues and reflected in purchase power. There's an additional expenditure there. The distribution side of the division anticipated 1.656 million in an increase in net position. The hydro generation anticipating a loss of 657 for a net of the $999,320, as shown in the packet and approved by commission. When moving to the water department, this anticipated budget change in net position of a loss of $176,210. That is a reduction in a loss from what was budgeted in 2024 at $444,000 in the loss. So that's a overall 17% increase in revenues. This is after the increase in rates that occurred, that are set to occur, that commission approved last month. So we had a 17% increase in revenues with offset by only a 9.2% increase in expenditures. And then wastewater had a budgeted change in net position of $120,780, which was up from last year's budget of $70,800. There, that's an 8.8% increase in revenues and only a 7.9% increase in expenses. That's the general overview of the operational budget that was approved. Significant items to point out to council, a lot of this expenditure, added expenditure relates to employees and the needs that have been requested from commission. The total employee budget that is included in the numbers that I just presented, is 56, 56 full-time employees. That is up two from last year. That includes a network administrator, systems administrator, journeyman electrician, tech supervisor, maintenance supervisor, the business office support specialist, the facilities custodian, and the relief operator. The journeyman electrician, business office support specialist, and facilities custodian are currently going through the interview process and the acquisition. The other positions are placeholders at this point that were approved with the org chart back in August of 2023, as well as discussions with the IT integration. That is where the network and systems administrator, their budgets have been included in here.
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
Danny, could you just give me the first two employee positions you mentioned there? The systems administrator and?
Network administrator.
Okay. Those two positions have not yet been approved by the city council, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Could somebody explain maybe to everybody, so there's an understanding of what's going on here? Because I sat through the commission meeting last Tuesday, and I feel like I pay attention, and I attended the integration work group meeting last Monday, and I understand what was said there, but not one single word that I received in a follow-up email was given at the Public Utility Commission meeting, and, and I don't know if it needs to be done now, but he just identified two positions that technically have not been approved. And so if somebody would explain, maybe Chris or Nick would be willing to do that, is what is going on, so everybody knows instead of sitting quietly during a meeting, letting a commission vote on something with, I think, an understanding that what is happening wasn't really happening. I'd love to hear that answer. Maybe right now is not the appropriate time, but we need to identify that these two positions he just mentioned have not been approved. But he says they're in their budget. Now, how does that work? They are in the budget, right?
I think we'll turn it over to Chris Schubert, but just, just?
I had one point, they are in the budget, right, Danny?
I included them in the budget, yes.
Okay, so?
So if we approve the BPU budget tonight, then we will, those two are in it, so?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's good. But I'd like to have an understanding of what's really going on, because the answer I got, that, that should, that's got to be approved by us, and that would be approval of those two positions. So am I missing something, maybe, Chris?
I guess.
Chris can, Chris can maybe help?
Yeah.
Chris Schubert, our HR director.
Well, I'll try to help. So during the, the Public Utilities Commission meeting, they gave conceptual approval to two new positions, the systems administrator and the network administrator positions. So they did talk about those two positions. They knew that they were in the budget. One of those positions was actually in the budget in 2024 already, and what they were told was, they were given a sample job description that was provided by the public utilities IT supervisor, based on the job duties that he felt that that position would hold. And at this point, those job descriptions have not been vetted by HR. They have not been finalized. The IT integration group, or the integration work group, excuse me, is still looking at what should be done with the IT department. So they just got an idea of what those positions would be, so that they weren't approving something they had no idea at all about. I hope that helps clarify that.
Mr. Chesak?
Well, it, it does, but there's still things that are left out there that really we haven't explained, like what union that was discussed, not at the commission meeting. I, I don't think the commission fully understood what they're voting on and what the, what's coming forward here. I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we talk about transparency, and I don't see any part of this as being transparent. When we have the commission approving two positions, maybe one was budgeted for last year, we have a completely new one, conceptual approval. Oh, I, that's, that's all new to me. Conceptual approval of a job description that's a sample? I've never heard of this type of thing before, and it really bothers me because I don't think we're giving all the information all the time. I don't know if anybody wants to weigh in on that and correct me. I'd be happy to hear it. Chris, Nick, you were there, didn't say a word. It's very troubling to me, Mr. Bevins.
Thank you. Public Utilities Director Evans has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we, we did this as a conceptual idea for the purpose of making sure that we had places reserved in the budget, so at such time in the future when these positions were created, that we could actually fill these positions as opposed to having to postpone to another budget cycle to actually get them in a budget, if that makes any sense.
It helps, thank you.
Yes, Kelly.
Ms. Gabe Johnson?
Yeah, so I, I don't think if we approve the budget, we're approving adding FTEs. I mean, I just don't agree with that assessment on it. I think it's, I think it's proper budgeting to include the positions that you intend to add, because if they, the commission does bring those positions to the city council and they get approved in February or May or whenever, they will have the money in the budget to hire immediately. So I think approving the budget numbers and approving the positions are two entirely different actions, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments on operating or employees? Danny, anything else?
Included in the budget is 10% of the administrators' salary and benefits as requested at the council's budget session in 2023.
What was that, Gabe?
I said in 2023.
Yep. Please proceed, Davey.
That concludes my notes, if there are any questions.
I have one quick thing. Could you just, could you explain what the commission did on Tuesday regarding the fees for credit card, and does that number show up in your budget? The, the savings for the credit card fees?
Yes. So at the commission meeting on last Tuesday, the commission approved credit card transaction fees to be at a 4.75%. I have to be mindful of, are they called transaction fees or, but credit card fees are being passed on to those using credit cards. That is what the commission approved at a 4.75%. The credit card transaction fees themselves are included in the expense lines. That, those expenses will not go away. What I did is, in other revenues for each of the divisions, included provision for half of the credit card fees to give us time to implement the administration of accepting those fees.
And what's the anticipated savings in one year when we get that fully integrated, approximately?
$490,000. Thank you. That's a lot of money.
Any other questions or comments on the BPU operating or capital budget? All right. Thank you, Danny. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Evans. We're looking now for a motion adopting the 2025 operating budget and five-year capital improvement plan for the Brainerd Public Utilities Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, is there a second?
A second.
Second by O'Day. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Johnson?
Well, I, I would like clarification on if we approved this budget as presented. Are we approving hiring two new positions January 1st? I, I don't have clarification on that, and I want, I want a clear, concrete answer, because I will vote no if we're expanding the IT department when we're looking at reorganizing it.
All right. Chris has got the?
No, you are not. And the reason why is the council has not approved the job description yet. We would still need to negotiate wages with the unions. All of that process still needs to happen. As Chris has stated, this was a placeholder in the budget, just so that we have the positions there, and we also wanted to make sure both the commission and the council was fully aware of what was happening, so there was no surprises as far as the positions that they were planning to include in their budget.
Okay, thank you. So I'm hearing a clear answer of the positions are not authorized.
They will come back.
Okay. So then I'll support this. I, you know, it looks, it looks good, Danny. I'm sure it's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of numbers. It's a lot of departments. I really support it. I think it's unfortunate that nobody from the commission can show up, because the charter literally says the commission shall present an operating budget. But they've got competent staff, and I think you guys did a great job, so I'll be in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the budget presented? Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, I, I appreciate Gabe, Gabe asking that question, because we, we need to be clear, and I don't know if everybody necessarily is or was. I think it's cleared up a lot. And I would just like to thank the Public Utility Commission members for doing their job. They have a lot on their plate, as you can see, and they hire staff to do this work, and I think staff did a fine job of presenting tonight, not necessarily that they, commission members be here, and contrary to what Mr. Johnson said, so. And the charter says a lot of things we don't always follow, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We have a motion. We have a second. I believe this is just a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Thank you, Public Utilities. Next up is the 2025 budget and levy discussion for the city of Brainerd and public hearing. Connie Hillman, we're going to start with you. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Actually, I would like to give the presentation so that we can open up the public hearing.
Perfect.
All right.
I like the way you think.
So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the city of Brainerd's 2025 budget and levy and allow for public input. This is not a meeting to discuss the valuation that has been placed on properties as those meetings are held in May. Questions regarding property and valuation? Questions regarding property evaluation and classifications can be directed to the Land Services Building at the county, and their phone number is 218-824-1010. Minnesota's property tax system is very complex, so this is a simplified version of it. It all starts with the estimated market value in Crow Wing County that is determined by the Assessor's Office. The statutory formula is then applied based on how the property is classified, whether it's commercial, residential, homestead, et cetera, and we get the total tax capacity of the city. This is a sum of all the different parcels, parcels in the city. The city council sets the city's levy. The amount of the levy is the city's income or revenue. The city's tax levy divided by the total tax capacity of the city equates to the city's tax rate. The tax rate is then applied to each parcel to determine the property owner's tax bill. So let's take a look at the city's estimated market value. The estimated market value of your property on January 2nd, 2024, is what is used to calculate the amount you pay for taxes in 2025. How is that rate amount determined? One of the main items that the Assessor's Office uses is a sales ratio study, which analyzes the sales that took place between the timeframe of October 2022 and September 2023. This study determines the value for the January 2nd, 2024 assessment date. Last March, you would have got an valuation notice, and in May is when the Board of Appeals and Equalizations hold their meeting. In November, property owners receive the proposed tax, taxes notice, and in December, cities with a population over $500, 500 people, need to hold a tax levy hearing, and that is what we are doing tonight. In March of 2025, your actual property tax bill will be mailed to you, and your first property tax half is due in May 15th, and the second half is due October 15th. Here's a chart of the city's estimated market value, comparing the pay year 2025 to pay year 2024. Overall, we had a 4.1% increase over pay year 2024. This chart shows the history of the estimated market values for the City of Brainerd. 2023 and 2024 were significant increases, they were double digits, whereas the 2025 increase estimated market value seems a little more in line with previous years. So if you look at the total tax capacity of the city, by taking the total estimated market value and applying the statutory formula based on classification, this equates to an estimated tax capacity for the City of Brainerd of $13,318,012 for pay year 2025. This is a $360,372 dollar increase in tax capacity. Tax capacity of the city is about 1.1% of the estimated market value, just to kind of give you an idea. This is a graph of the estimated tax capacity by classification. Over the last years, we can, we have seen a shift in the tax burden from commercial industrial properties and others to residential. For 2025, there was just a slight change from the other and residential to commercial industry. However, residential property is still the biggest portion of our tax capacity at 61%. So what does it mean for an increase in the city's tax capacity? Well, if the city has this levy, and there's no change to the levy, divided by an increase in tax capacity, we would expect to see a decrease in the city's tax rate. We have looked at the estimated market value and the tax capacity of the city. The next thing we'll look at is the city's levy. The city determines its levy through the budgeting process. We estimate all of the expenditures, personnel costs, supplies, services, debt, and capital. We estimate all of the non-property tax revenues, the fees, the LGA, fines, and per the League of Minnesota City Handbook, budgeting is planning and prioritizing goals for the coming year based on experiences in the past year or years. So we'll start by taking a look at the operating expenditures and personnel services. Personnel services with a budget amount of just under 92, 9.2 million is the largest expense category of the operating expenditures. Personnel services have increased about $654,000 over the 2024 adopted budget. This increase is primarily due to contracts that were settled and employees moving through the city's pay scale. The council has budgeted one less full-time employee in the working funds, but is budgeting an additional temporary employee, so a quarter FTE, and we're budgeting three quarters of a less of a seasonal employee. However, for all governmental funds, the same number of full-time employees are being budgeted for 2025. The council will be using the one-time public safety aid revenue it received in 2023 to fund 67% of one and a half police officers. We will see this reflected in the use of fund balance later. We're budgeting to have the one open position in the operating funds to be filled in 2025, and we're budgeting any new employee will elect the $3,300 family plan option for health The 2025 health insurance rates for the plans that the majority of employees have, the increase was an average of 8% over the 2024 rates. Two unions that affect the levy amount and the non-union department heads and supervisors' wages have not been settled for 2025, but an estimate is included in the budget. Our services increased just over 400, just under 403,000 from the 2024 budget. The budget, we're budgeting to use a third-party contractor for inspections needed for certain building projects. This has to do with our state delegation. We're budgeting for an increased cost in the records management software for the police department. Part of the increase will be funded with a grant from Source Wealth, which we will see in the revenue, and the remainder of the additional costs will be covered using the one-time public safety aid, which we will see later reflected in the use of fund This also assumes that the city will continue to lease vehicles. We budgeted various, we budgeted various assumptions for the general insurance that renews in March of 2025. And we increased in professional services and rental expense due to updating the comprehensive plan and street sweeping screening costs. Both of these projects occur every five years, and the city has been saving for these costs in the capital fund. The increase in expenditure is offset by an increase in transfers in, which we'll see in the revenue section. We're also budgeting increase in the amount of aid to be passed through the Fire Relief After we look at operating expenditures, we look at the amount needed to fund capital needs. The capital levy is to fund all city-owned facilities, and to fund equipment needs for all departments except for the enterprise funds. The council is proposing a reduce, to reduce the capital levy by $100,000 in 2025. Total capital purchases for 2025 total $1,712,856, excluding equipment for the enterprise funds. This is a summary of the capital purchases that are currently being budgeted for 2025. The park board has requested a long-term maintenance, um, capital asset maintenance request of $519,234 for 2025. This funding may not be spent in 2025, but it will be used in the future years to offset the costs of projects. The council did reduce the park board's request by $100,000 to $419,234, to be able to decrease the capital levy by $100,000. You may have noticed that the levy for capital equipment and facilities is $1,180,927, yet we're planning on spending $1,712,856. The goal of the city council is not to have to issue debt for equipment and facilities. The next slide will show a portion of the 30-year capital plan. Assuming that the capital levy will stay at the same for the next five years at the reduced amount by $100,000 starting in 2025, we have the $1,712,856 of proposed cash expenditures for 2025, as well as the future year budgets, and we have the increase of the $419,234 added to the park's long-term capital maintenance plan, and the future years' plans amounts have all been reduced by $100,000. At this point, the bottom line shows that the council may have to reprioritize the projects in the future years, as 2027 is showing a projected negative cash balance. The city needs to levy for debt service. The city needs to levy what is needed to make the August 2025 and February 2026 payments. For 2025, we had a decrease in the amount needed for the debt levy of $212,193. The city also has other levies that are set by charter or that the city has to fund. These levies are for permanent improvement, roads, and for the senior activity, green space, and community festivals, are based on a percentage of the 2024 total levy. The library levy is a 2% increase over 2024. The EDA board has requested the maximum allowed by state statute.
Connie, we got, we got a question by Gabe Johnson.
So the library increased by 2%? Because I heard on the radio, I don't know if you guys listen to the radio, I heard on the radio that their funding has been stagnant. But an increase isn't stagnant, that's an increase, right? Or is that the same?
The city is increasing the funding for the library by 2%.
Okay, so the radio advertisement I heard of the library purchase was misleading me.
And I understood it to be the county's levy.
They didn't say that. They mentioned when the county truth and taxation hearing was, they said the library funding has been stagnant.
They did say that.
And we're putting $500,000 into the building, we increased their operating by 2%. I, I'm a little offended, they would just disregard the increase that we sent them. So I'm just bringing that up right now. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, go ahead, Connie.
Okay. So the EDA board requested the maximum allowed by state statute, which would have been a $27,800 increase, but the council kept the EDA levy the same as in 2024. The airport commission requested a 2025 appropriation of $220,000. The council has set the airport levy at $1,000 to eliminate the double taxation of the Brainerd residents for the airport. This is a decrease of about $145,000. So when we total all of the estimated expenditures that are supported by the levy, the total 2025 budgeted expenditures total $16,611,138, and this is an increase of $669,519 from the 2024 budget, or a 4.2% increase. So now that we have the total budget expenditures, we now need to look at the non-property tax revenues. Total budgeted non-property tax revenues total $9,248,386, which is an estimated increase of $312,560 compared to the 2024 budget. The city has an increase in grants and aids. The budget includes a $6,030 increase to local government aid, otherwise known as LGA from the state, but is also budgeting over a $60,000 increase in police state aid, and over a $41,000 increase in fire state aid. The increases are based on using the amounts received in 2024 for the 2025 budget. The fire state aid is passed on to the Fire Relief Association that we previously discussed, and that's why we saw an increase in the expense. We're budgeting an increase in revenues from other governments. This is mainly due to budgeting for a $20,000 grant from Source Wealth for the records management system, and an increase in the amounts recollected for the SRO contract and the joint prosecution agreements with Baxter and Nisswa. There's also an increase in transfers in, and the 2025 budget has transfers of funds from the capital fund for the comprehensive plan update and for the street sweeping screening costs that occur every five years that the city was planning for savings in the capital budget. The other items that the, uh, to consider in setting the levy is any use, any use or addition to the fund balance. And 2025 is not an election year. The city budgets $15,000 for the elections that are held every other year. Therefore, in 2025, the city will increase the fund balance by 15,000 to be able to use it in the 2026, which is an election year. Here we also see the use of fund balance in the amount of $110,375 of public safety aid. This is to fund again the 67% of the one and a half police officers, and the increase in budgeted costs for the records management software that's not covered by the grant. To get the levy of 4%, the city would need to use an additional $29,436 of fund balance. So the difference between the budget expenditures and property tax, non-property tax revenue equals the levy needed, and for 2025, this amount is $7,237,341, and is a 4% increase over the 2024 levy.
That, Connie, um, you said 7,000, you mean 7 million, right?
Sorry, Jeff.
That's okay.
So the 2025 preliminary levy was adopted in September at $7,515,698. This was an 8% increase over the 2024 levy. The 2025 preliminary levy, which was used to compute the property, proposed property tax statements that property owners just received. The city's final levy set in December can be lower, but cannot be higher than the preliminary levy. Since September, line items have been reviewed and initial assumptions used have been changed based on additional information received, and line items have been updated based on actual revenue received in the case of police and fire state aids and recent adoption of the fee schedule. Therefore, the final levy could be set at 4%, at a 4% increase to cover the budgeted expenditures. The above table shows the preliminary levies, levies or the final, or proposed in the case of 2025. The city would like to avoid the peaks and valleys in the levy. The table also shows that for nine out of the last 16 years, the council has reduced the final levy set in December from the preliminary levy set in September. The city has over 80 different funds, but it does not officially adopt a budget for all the funds. This graph shows the funding sources for all governmental funds that the city does adopt a budget for. The city does have two enterprise funds that it does, does officially adopt a budget for, and the information is excluded from this graph. So we have the amount that the city levies, which is 39.4% of all revenue, all revenues budgeted. The next biggest portion of funding comes from intergovernmental revenues. On here? What happened to my mouse? Uh, the next biggest portion comes from LGA, and the biggest source is the city LGA, which were certified to, um, collect $5,244,892 in LGA. That's a $6,030 increase in what we're scheduled to certify to receive in 2024. We also have fines and services, which is 7.5% of all budgeted revenues. Enterprise fund from BPU also provides funds to the city, which is 4.2% of all budgeted revenues. And then we have other taxes, licenses, and permits, and miscellaneous, such as our special assessments and interest. It's important to note that 60.6% of all budgeted revenues come from sources other than property taxes. We look at our budgeted expenditures. The general fund, public safety, parks, and street and sewer funds are what we consider the working funds, and activities from these funds are supported by the levy, which totals 71.6% of, of total budgeted expenditures. We have transit at 9.3, capital at 9.1, debt service at 4%, road and maintenance at 2.2, and the other category, which is programs of the, in the charter, such as green space, senior activities, and community festivals, library, EDA, recycling, and city-owned parking
I have a question, if I can, Kelly.
Yep, any, any questions?
Do we levy for the transit?
No, but this is, we do budget for them, so their part, that's their expenditures is 9.3.
9% of the city's.
And then part of the intergovernmental includes the funding for the transit.
Thank you, yeah, I was just, because it did, still says levy up at the top, so I was just, I was just clarifying.
Oh, sorry.
Not levying for transit.
Right, we're not levying for transit. So now let's look at the city's tax rate. With the levy at a 4% increase, the city's estimated 2025 tax rate is 54.851%. The rate is an estimated increase of 0.668% from the 2024 tax rate of 54.183%. Keep in mind that the preliminary levy was set at an 8% increase, and the estimated tax rate was 56.963%, and this is what was used for the proposed tax statements that was just received. Now let's look at the impact of applying the city's tax rate to the individual property owner's tax capacity, which determines the property owner's tax bill for 2025. Assuming that an individual homestead property had an estimated market value of $150,000 in 2024, the property owner's tax capacity in 2024 would have been $1,263, and that's determined by taking the estimated market value of $150,000, applying the homestead exclusion and the statutory percentage, then applying the city's tax rate of 54.183% to the tax capacity, that homeowner would have paid $684 in city taxes in 2024. This table shows the changes to the city's tax rate liability for 2025, assuming that there was no change in the value of the property. Now if you'll notice that the tax capacity is different in 2025 than what it is in 2024. Now in 2025, the tax capacity is only $1,170 versus $1,263, and that is because they made a change to the homestead exclusion for 2025. It is now 40% on the first $95,000, and it's completely gone if the estimated market value is $517,200. So if the property owner, if we had a 4% increase in liability, the property owner would actually see a $43 decrease in their annual city tax liability. However, we know that this is not true, and it's not what property owners are seeing on their taxes, because they are seeing increases in their estimated market value, and that the tax rate was set at 8% instead of 4%. So we look at the same property, and we look, and assume that the property owner had a 4.1% increase in their estimated market value, they would have seen, they would assume a, they would, they would have saw on their, um, proposed property tax statement, a $20 increase in their property taxes. With a 4% increase in the levy, and the same 4.1% increase. With a four percent increase in the levy and the same four point one percent increase in estimated market value, they could see a decrease of about six dollars in their tax, in their city tax liability. So to compute the updated city property tax liability for pay year two thousand twenty five, you would take the city proposed tax liability from the proposed tax statement and subtract three point seven zero three three percent to come up with your tax liability. If we take a look at the total tax impact for a residential home property owner, using the four point one percent increase in their estimated market value, the total tax liability for two thousand twenty five is estimated to be one thousand three hundred eighty four dollars or three dollar a year or point two two percent increase. Now the proposed property tax statements would have showed a two point one six percent increase in their total tax liability. There are three reasons why your tax book can change this year. We have the usual change in tax rate, two, the change in the estimated market value, and the third one for this year is the estimated effect and the change of the homestead credit. Overall, the total tax rate has increased. So due to the change in tax rate, this homeowner would expect to see a twenty four dollar increase in their taxes due to the change in tax rate. They would also expect to see a seventy one dollar or a five point two nine percent increase due to the change of the estimated market value. However, due to the effect of the change in the homestead credit, the property tax is reduced by ninety two dollars or six point nine three percent for a net difference of three dollars or point two two percent. We have the different taxes by the jurisdiction in which they would expect to see a city decrease of the five dollars and eighty four cents, eighty six cents. So for two thousand twenty five, every dollar that a residential property owner pays in taxes, twenty cents goes to Crow Wing County, two cents goes to others, this is region five, the city HRA and the county HRA trust fund. Twenty seven cents goes to the school district and fifty one cent goes to the city. Now if we look at the impact for a commercial property owner, assuming a commercial property owner had an estimated market value of five hundred twenty five thousand two hundred dollars in two thousand twenty four, the property owner's tax capacity in two thousand twenty four would have been nine thousand seven hundred and fifty four dollars. And again, that's determined by taking the estimated market value and applying the statutory percentage for commercial property. Then we'd apply the city's tax rate, they would have had a city tax liability of five thousand two hundred and eighty five dollars in two thousand twenty four. This chart shows the various changes to the levy, assuming no change in the estimate market, market value, estimated market value. With a four percent increase in the levy, they would expect to see a two hundred and seventy one dollar increase in their city tax liability. Again, we know that it's not realistic to assume that there was no change in the estimated market value. And so with the, um, proposed properties tax statement, a property owner who paid five hundred and eighty, five thousand two hundred and eighty five dollars in city tax liability in two thousand twenty four, but had the average four point one percent increase in the estimated market value, would be seeing a five hundred and sixteen dollar increase in their city tax liability. With the four percent increase in the levy and a four point one percent increase in the estimated market value, they'd expect to see about three hundred and one dollars increase. And again, there's a formula to comp, how to compute your tax liability. We look at the total tax bill for a commercial property. Um, the total tax property, or total tax liability in two thousand twenty four would have been twelve thousand eighty three dollars. The proposed tax liability for two thousand twenty five is twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety seven dollars, which is a seven hundred and fourteen or five point nine one percent increase. Again, the proposed property tax statement would have showed an overall total increase of seven point six nine percent. There's only two reasons why a commercial property tax, uh, bill would change, and that's the effect of change in tax rate and the change in the estimated market value. We saw an overall increase in the rates. And so the estimated market value by, uh, the increase due to the tax rate change would be a hundred and forty six dollars or one point two one percent. Change in market value would have been five hundred and sixty seven dollars or four point seven percent for a net increase of seven hundred and fourteen dollars or five point nine one percent. And the city's increase is three hundred and one dollars, which represents, um, I lost my mouse here. The increase was about, um, about forty two percent, I do believe. For two thousand twenty five, for every dollar a commercial property owner pays in taxes, they pay nineteen cents to the state general fund, seventeen cents to Crow Wing County, two for other, nineteen for school district and forty three cents for the city. So the final budget and levy will be adopted at the December sixteenth, two thousand twenty four council meeting. The levy must be certified to the county auditor by December thirtieth. And now we can open it up for a public hearing.
Perfect. Can I ask if anybody has any questions up here first? None. All right, it is eight twenty five and we'll open the public hearing on the two thousand twenty five budget and levy. And all, anybody who wishes to speak to come on up, state your name and address please first, because we're on television, and let us know what you think. If you're online, star three will notify us that you wish to speak and then star six will unmute you. I'll ask a second time if anybody in the public wishes to speak on the two thousand twenty five budget and levy. See anybody online? And I'll ask a third and final time if anybody wishes to speak on the two thousand twenty five budget and levy to please come forward or star three online. It is eight twenty six and I will close the budget and levy discussion for two thousand twenty five public hearing. Connie, is there anything else we need to do till next December sixteenth?
Correct.
Perfect. We will move on to item seven, council committee report, seven A, safety. What's that, Mr. Stunek?
He's happy we're moving on.
Okay. Mr. 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 Stunek wishes to, wishes to speak on behalf of all the accountants in the city of Brainerd. Thank you for the presentation. All right, seven A is Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Mr. Mike O'Dea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Safety and Public Works, we had five items tonight. We'll try and get through this in under an hour. Uh, first item was payment for improvement twenty two dash zero eight South Brainerd reconstruction. And motion coming out of committee was to recommend authorization to pay the contractor up to three million six hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars and fifty one cents. And I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Chesek. Any discussion? Mr. O'Dea?
Yeah, this is our big project in South Brainerd, um, mostly along Seventh, um, and some other streets involved. Uh, slightly over budget, um, due to some random line items. Um, if you want more detail, you can ask our public works director, Mr. Habighorst. Uh, but we're, we're about twenty five thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and three cents over the, uh, estimate. Um, and still withholding one percent retainage pending the turf establishment next spring.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Mr. President, next item was, uh, final pay estimate for improvement twenty four dash zero two, two thousand twenty four chip ceiling. Uh, motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the final pay request for improvement twenty four dash zero two, two thousand twenty four chip ceiling project in the amount of a hundred and fifty nine thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars and nine cents. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Dea.
I'll just say this was, uh, roughly ten, eleven thousand dollars, uh, over the original contract amount. Uh, there were some problems with the original estimate, uh, just didn't take into account the radius, the turn radius on each intersection on the north, north or south sides of, of B Street. Uh, so staff is gonna make sure we don't miss those in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you. Item number three was a final pay estimate for improvement twenty three fifteen and twenty three twenty seven, both the Evergreen and Bluff, Bluff resurfacing projects. Uh, motion coming out of sta, or of committee was to approve the final request for these improvements, um, in the amount of one hundred and fifty seven thousand five hundred and thirty nine dollars and forty cents, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Dea.
Yeah, this one was actually quite a bit further over budget. Ran into some problems with a, a very large tree. We had to replace more curbing than we expected on the bluff side. Uh, there was more patching and, uh, some more painting and some different random things that added significant amount of cost. Um, again, things that we're looking to not overlook in future estimates, but here we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion, Mr. Chesek?
Uh, Chairman O'Dea, could you just repeat the total amount on that? Was it one fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty something?
Hundred and fifty seven thousand five hundred and thirty nine dollars and forty cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you. Next, we had approval for the layout for the Lowell Safe Routes to School project. And motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the attached layout as presented for the Lowell Elementary Safe Routes to School project. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
I'll just mention, we do have, uh, our representative from WSB here who, uh, helped finalize this, this design, if anybody does have questions on it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you. Item number five was a discussion on sanitary forced main sewer lining, the project and sewer rates. Motion coming out of committee, uh, was a split vote. Uh, but the motion coming out of committee was to recommend to include the project in the two thousand twenty seven, twenty, for two thousand twenty seven, the ten-year capital improvement plan and continue moving forward with the sewer rates as per the rate study recommendation. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Stingline. Any discussion?
Yeah, President Bevins.
Okay, I'm gonna put you after, Mr. Chair.
I was actually going to.
Okay, Mr. Chesek.
Mr. Chesek.
Yeah, I, I, this goes back, um, I don't know, back probably till December when, uh, we had the, um, sewer line in the alley between Quince and, uh, um, Rosewood. And, uh, the additional cost and I asked that the fees come, or the costs come back to look at our rates that we're paying. And we found out in the interim in that two weeks that, uh, they had another hundred thousand dollars on the, uh, cost of a sewer, um, sanitary sewer line and then some additional smaller projects. And so we're upwards of two hundred thousand in our sanitary sewer fund. And so I asked that we look at the rates and the council agreed to have staff come back. In our last meeting, we, the staff comes back and of course, at that time earlier, they showed us the, uh, 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 East, uh, East River Road, I believe it's called, uh, sanitary sewer line, the main. And, uh, they got the SEH report from February and it was rather alarming to me. Um, these things have been, uh, looked at for many years now. And it was scheduled, this project was scheduled for this year. And I forget the original estimate was in the four hundred thousand dollar range, and then it comes back at one point one million, an estimate by SEH. And now we're being told we're just gonna jack up the costs, push it back to two thousand twenty seven and add another three, four hundred thousand dollars onto this. And I, I, I keep going back to this. We're always looking at what's in the best interest of our taxpayers. And I, and I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Habighorst, but I kept hearing him say, well, if we push this back, or we push this, uh, on two thousand twenty, do it sooner instead of two thousand twenty seven, then other projects is pushed back. Again, this was scheduled for this year until we saw the cost. That's what delayed this even from coming forward to us with the information until October. And so it really bothers me that we, we always talk about what's in the best interest of the taxpayer. You, you hear this all the time, and I am a true believer in that. And pushing this back to two thousand twenty seven with literally the cost unknown, it's all an estimate of what'll go up. We wanna bond for it and now we pay it back little by little. I'm not in favor of bonding for anything. Cash is always best when we're talking about what's in the best interest of our taxpayers. To suggest that, and, and I still haven't got a clear answer, maybe Connie, I know Nick had asked you in an email, what does it mean, that last line in the agenda request? It says, "We don't want to have this account overfunded." Nobody's given me a clear answer what the consequences of having this account overfunded are. I'd have to ask that question first before I go on if I could, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Connie or anybody on staff able to answer that?
I don't know if I can answer it fully, Jeff, but I would think that we would not want to have our current ratepayers paying for future projects. So that is why we would not want the fund to be overfunded. Is there any ramifications of having more cash than what we need? I don't believe so.
Well, I, I appreciate that answer, but we, we've got projects after projects after projects. It's all gotta be paid for. Uh, our, our community, uh, I'm sorry, our, uh, our, uh, Mr. Habighorst, he indicated earlier that these projects are ongoing year after year. Sanitary sewer lines, we all know they're deteriorating, we all know they need funding. And to suggest that any account related to sanitary sewer could potentially be overfunded, it seems ludicrous to me. Because we have to pay for these things. And we can't keep kicking the can down the road, which I see this as happening with this particular project. It's a mammoth project. It's the largest line we have in the city, if I'm not mistaken. It needs to be taken care of, and we just say, oh, the taxpayers can pay an extra twenty five percent because we wanna wait. It makes absolutely no sense to me to put this off till two thousand twenty seven, if it even happens then. That's all I have, Mr. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chesek. Thank you. Any further discussion? Chairman O'Dea.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand Mr. Chesek's concerns. In discussions about this project, there's a lot of things that came up. So we, we budgeted for it this year at about half the size of the project that it was supposed to be. It would be nice to get it done this year. It would have been great. Turns out, the recommendation is to re-line or, or to line a pipe that's about twice as long, from what I understand, as what it was originally. Uh, the bigger part of this is doing all of it at once or doing it half and half or smaller chunks. And every time you do a smaller chunk or the entire thing, the entire part that you're doing has to be bypassed. Now that's, that's, that's actually the more expensive portion of this project. So doing it all at once is what we wanna do in the longer run, that will actually save some cost. Inflation will drive the cost up if we push it back year by year. But we don't have the funds in our account right now, as far as I understand. So instead of going into debt, we can push for some state bonding money in a few years. That's the way I understand it. I've already brought it up to a state representative. Um, it's in discussion. We'll see what happens. That's no guarantee either. But pushing it out makes sense to me, even with some inflation. Because in the report, this pipe was not failing right now. There's no, the, the pipe is actually sound. There's some, some roots growing into it that needs to be fixed when, when all this is fixed. But from, from that study, uh, there's a lot of other issues that need to be fixed before we attack this one. It doesn't need to be done today. But if something were to happen that were catastrophic, we can shift some things around and get it done as soon as possible because we would have no other choice. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman Johnson.
Yeah.
Hey. I agree with Alderman Chesek on a, on a couple of his points, you know. First of all, I would say I don't agree that there's such thing as excess reserves or this fund being overfunded. Because we don't have the money to pay for the projects we need to do now. We know this project has been, or this fund has been not, in not good shape for years. So excess money is overfunded, seems a little, little obscene to be saying. I, I also think we plan for these projects in five-year or ten-year capital plans for two re, not just for one reason, for two reasons. For internal planning, for budgeting items and lining projects up. But secondly, we hold a public hearing on these. It's to communicate to the public when we are doing a project, when we are gonna be tearing their street up, when we are gonna be redoing their sewer lines. And we tell them years in advance and they, so they have time to prepare. So switching it up, I don't really like the idea of it. However, we budget four hundred thousand dollars a year for projects out of this fund. This project is significantly more than four hundred thousand. So I think we do need to push it back and identify how we're going to pay for it. You know, and it's not gonna be out of excess reserves because they don't exist. It will be bonding. And perhaps I think we should look at increasing rates in twenty five instead of waiting till twenty six. But I will support this motion because we don't have the one point four million dollars to do this project right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion?
Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesek.
Just kind of a clarification. I, I appreciate what you said, Gabe. It's not one point four, that'll be one point four in two thousand twenty seven. It's one point one today. And, uh, you know, the bonding, um, that's always a good option, but you never can count on it. We've looked at bonding requests going, uh, nowhere already in just in the last year or two. Um, uh, so I, the, the. going nowhere already in just in the last year or two. So the whole thing about the information provided in there about having eight hundred thousand to cover this, I mean, it just seems like everything's gotta be paid for. And if we can bond in '27, we can bond in '25, you know? So let's get it off the ground and move forward with getting this project done. But again, that's not the motion coming out of committee, unfortunately. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chesick. Any further discussion? I would just like to echo Mr. Chairman Johnson's suggestion that we relook at our current, our sewer rates much sooner than anticipated. It seems like the prudent thing to do. I guess I have to trust staff that this could make it till 2027. It doesn't seem, as Mr. Chesick says, like the prudent economic thing to do. But on the other side of the coin, I understand we can't do all the projects at once. And so I'll support the motion. But I really would like to look at our sewer rates much sooner. So I mean, we heard from Daddy Locke, you've heard some of the rates that they're looking at. So any further discussion? Chairman O'Day.
I'll just comment that the comment that Mr. Chesick just made about bonding it sooner than that, I'd definitely be open to discussions about that if the council wants to revisit what our bonding priorities would be for 2025 or 2026 or however we wanna look at that. I'm open to looking at that, getting done as soon as possible. If we're going to bond it. Not right now. I'm just saying, for future discussion.
Right.
I'll take my second shot, too.
Okay, you've got it, Mr. Chair.
When I mentioned bonding, I meant issuing bonds, issuing debt to pay for it in the name of the taxpayers. I wasn't talking about asking for state bonding, like, for my comments at least.
That's what I was referring to.
Well, and I believe the motion just doesn't really say anything about that. It just says that we will continue move forward with sewer rates as per the rate study recommendation. So does, this motion, I don't think, actually has a payment.
It's more setting it in to the capital improvement plan for 2027.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Please proceed.
And report.
Thank you very much. Item seven B is Personal and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have ten items. I'm hoping we two can get done in less than an hour. The first item we have is to accept the resignation of IT Data Analyst Abigail Sova. And the motion is to accept Abigail Sova's resignation effective December 2nd, 2024, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
This is over in the Water and Light Department. Staff has, is not asking at the time to backfill this position. They are now hiring the business office support specialist we've been talking about for years. And Director Evans thinks that should be able to help in the office for now until they assess what needs they have going forward with this open position.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is a motion to ratify the hiring of Mr. Colton Guttenkauf effective December 4th, 2024 on step one of the police officer wage grid, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Is this '27? Is this '26? What is, '27. We're full contingent of police officers now.
Guttenkauf.
This is amazing.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is a motion to ratify the hiring of Lisa Osback effective December 23rd, 2024. Further, that should be placed on step one of the administrative specialist public works wage grid, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is to approve an MOA with IUOE. And the motion is to approve the attached MOA with the IUOE Local Forty-Nine Union to adjust wages effective July 1st, 2024, July 1st, 2025, and January 1st, 2026, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
This was the first bargaining unit to accept a contract with, through '24 through ' '26. They accepted at a little bit less than other units have agreed to. So we're just going back to amend the contract to make them whole with the same percentage increases at each, each interval.
Thank you.
President Bevins.
Mr. Chesick.
What's the employee group called? I heard the letters, but what's the?
Oh, the Street Division. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
All right, now we got a big one. We have two actions on this one. The first one is a motion to approve the attached '25 through '27 tentative agreement summary between the city and L E L S number sixty-five union representing our police officers, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
Okay, so they accepted the same wage increases other unions have for '25 and '26. This is the first unit to accept into '27, and that's at a three percent wage adjustment in '27.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, this is just the agreement, yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Please proceed.
Okay, and there's a second item on this one, and we need to adopt the attached resolution setting the L E L S number sixty-five wages for '25 through '27, and I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by, was it Terry?
Yes.
Any discussion on the wage resolution? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesick?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is authorization to enter in a contract with Ratwick, Rozak, and Maloney. And the motion is authorize staff to enter an agreement with Ratwick, Rozak, Maloney for '25 and '26 services, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
So there were some minor changes to their hourly wages and the retainer amount of a couple thousand dollars. Over the last ten years, it's been about seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year. So we expect with the minor changes, it'll probably stay in there. And we think if we can stay out of like lawsuits and arbitration stuff, it might even be lower.
So far, no good. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Next up is authorization to enter an agreement with CLA for the 2024 audit services. And the motion is to authorize a signature on the statement of work audit services with CLA for the 2024 audit services, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Chairman Johnson.
This would engage CLA to do our audit again next year. It's a, we really couldn't do an RFP if we wanted, just with the tight timeline. That's something we probably need to talk about in June or July. So we'll come back and talk about that next summer and see if we do want to do an RFP for a different audit firm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion? Mr. Chesick?
Maybe Chairman Johnson knows it. When's the last time we went out for an RFP on the auditing service?
I was on the council. But Mary Kope was too, so it wasn't that recent. But we went out and we interviewed three or four firms, probably 2017-ish.
That's what I'm thinking, yep.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is the sulfur update. And this is just informational. Or no, we did actually make a motion. Staff needed direction. There's information on where we are on these ARPA budget funds that we allocated to police department parks and a number of projects, on where we're at. A number of the projects are done. Some aren't quite yet done. We need to have all of the money committed by the end of this year. The motion out of committee is to stay the course and bring it back in two weeks, and ISO move.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second? A second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
So we are paying some bills this week, and we'll have a better view of what it's gonna look like on 12/16. And if we need to commit some funds before the end of the year, we'll do that at the, at the next.
So we may not have any funds.
We may not have any funds to commit.
Got it.
Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesick.
And then on the 16th, do you anticipate if there are funds left, do we have to debate to discuss? Or I assume your committee will be looking at those and making recommendations then, if there's money that we have to?
Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, I imagine if there is money, Jeff, I imagine staff will come to us with a couple of options, recommendations. The committee will, will pick one and bring it to council. It'll probably be something real basic, like offsetting police salaries or something like that, just to make sure the money doesn't get clot backed by the federal government. But we'll see in two weeks.
We just wanna make sure that we're not reducing our levy. I was reminded of that, that.
The levy's not being reduced. It was at eight percent preliminary.
We cannot use the levies to reduce that. So I think staff's recommendation would be to use it for additional capital projects that we've already spent funds.
Okay, thank you.
We might just have that debate right now. All right.
Got a little scared of them.
So the motion is to bring it back on the 16th?
Correct.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. This is the budgets for the non-working funds, which isn't part of our general operations as a city. It's informational only. It's the transit fund, library fund, recycling fund, city parking lot fund, permanent improvement fund, mayor's contingency fund, sanitary and storm sewer funds. If you notice, the library was increased by two percent this year.
Radio ads.
The mayor's contingency fund was held flat again.
Oh.
But it's just informational. If there's any questions, I direct them to Connie.
Thank you. Any questions on the non-working funds? Mr. Chesick.
I'm not, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last item is discussion of the 2025 operating budget and levy. Connie's got great news. We can walk out of here with a zero percent, but I'm gonna get, let her give a little presentation first, and then we'll, we can have discussion as a council. We had no recommendation out of committee. Kinda wanted this to be a full council discussion item.
And I just wanna reiterate that nothing tonight needs to be decided, that the final levy will be set next meeting. You know, so staff provided an updated 2025 proposed capital and portion of thirty-year capital plan based on the council's action from November 18th. And since that meeting, staff has received personnel services, has updated personnel services for conditional job offers made and updated a couple health insurance elections. The good news comes when we received our workers' comp renewal on Monday, the 25th, and updated the budget. The preliminary levy was based on information provided by the League of Minnesota City's Budget Guide and included a five percent increase in rates and experience mod adjustment of one point zero seven. With the renewal, the rates decreased and the city's experience mod was eight, point eight-nine, and it was point nine-seven for 2024. So the renewal lowered the budget for the working funds by about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Also, last week, the League of Minnesota City sent out an email with updated rate information for the general liability insurance, and this lowered the estimated budget for the working funds by about twenty-seven thousand dollars. So this means that the current recap shows that to achieve its balanced budget for 2025, the levy would need to be increased by twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, or a point three-seven percent increase over the 2024 levy. This item again is informational, so it's on the agenda for discussion. Staff did list a couple options in the agenda packet. You can set the final levy at the point three-seven-five increase. Or at the end of 2023, the city was not in compliance with this fund balance policy, and so we could remove using the fund balance in the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And this would then be a two percent increase over the 2024 levy. Could set the final levy at a range between the point three-seven and the four percent increase. We could restore the capital levy, increase the permanent improvement levy, or just increase fund balance to get in compliance with our fund balance policy and have a more steady increase rather than peaks and valleys in the overall levy. When I look at personnel services increased by six point four percent at five hundred and thirteen thousand, and services increased another three hundred and seventy-four thousand. With the reduction to the debt levy and capital, these are one-time reductions. And what will the levy look like next year? So those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Any comments?
Connie's thoughts are always doom and gloom.
Mr.?
She's still celebrating Halloween. President Bevins.
Mr. Chesick.
Could you just repeat that last item you said about the one-time reductions? And give me a little, just be more specific about those one-time reductions. And then I understand that you anticipate them back, so you're talking about peaks and valleys. But just explain what those two items were that you talked about at the end there.
So I don't know, Sean, if you can pull me back up again. So I just look at our personnel services. The total cost was five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That would be a very significant increase to our levy just to cover the increase in personnel, personnel services. For example, it would be almost like a seven, between a seven and eight percent increase in our levy. However, we didn't have to do that this year because we reduced our capital levy by a hundred thousand. We reduced our debt levy by two hundred and twelve thousand. And then we also decreased the airport levy by a hundred and forty-five thousand. So that kinda netted it out, and we don't need that high of an increase. But next year, if we anticipate the same amount of increase basically for our personnel services, how are we going to cut the cost of that increase?
And the two items you said at the end there were specific that you didn't, I'm sorry, I'm.
Capital and debt.
Capital and debt.
That's okay.
And then the airport levy can be added in there, too.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions on the 2025 levy?
Mr. President?
Yep, Mr. Care, Terry.
I don't have questions, but I do have something I wanna say.
Comment, sure.
Okay. So to go back a little bit, and I wasn't sure where to put my comments during the course of this meeting, so I'm gonna do it now. When we talk about double taxation for the airport levy, that is not correct terminology, and I wanna clarify, because double taxation makes a good campaign slogan, but it's not accurate. So double taxation would indicate the city is taking one dollar of taxes and the county is taking one dollar of taxes. That would be double taxation. That isn't the case. While the city is taxing its residents, let's say, one dollar, for example, the county is taking approximately six percent of that dollar. So that's about seventeen cents. So technically, it is not double taxation. Is it right? No. Is it double taxation? No. Is it something that should be remedied? Yes. As the dispatch article noted in, on 11/21, the county increased their levy by the taxable amount for the citizens of Brainerd by nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, and the city lowered their levy by that same amount. While that's not a perfect solution, it did show a good faith effort by the county to help with this issue. I'm not sure if folks are aware of the county budget process, but as an employee of the county, I am fully aware of the budget process, which begins in March. We start having discussions. And then we start vetting out the budget in May. So it's a really long process. We have very little time to, to rest before the next budget discussion starts. But the commissioners ask us to start early on, have the discussions, work through all the line items in our budgets, much like the city does. The discussions start earlier in the year, and as we work through the year, we progress with the initial levy, which is set. And you can't go up from there. And then we whittle it down to where, where the commissioners note that they want it. So for a council member or our council to bring up this issue now, within the last minutes, so to speak, of the budget process, I think that's a shot at the county board who has, who has already set their preliminary levy, and our discussions have went from March until now. So to bring it up toward the end of the levy discussions with the county, I think, is incorrect or unfair. What I've heard, and can correct me if I'm wrong, is that one council member on this city council pushed this issue so hard with a county board member that the discussion is now completely off the table. They did this without the consent of the entire council and did it on their own. So now there is one vote gone from the county board. Hopefully, next year, they'll reconsider and as we can take a more planful and earlier approach to having this discussion. Now, there's just a couple more items that I need to address because I can't be quiet. First, I want to address the issue of the discussions. With the pissing contest, and yes, I did use that word, we're in now with the county board, and the one thousand dollar allocation to the airport, what message do you think that that sends to our airport staff who are now questioned? staff, who are now questioning the funding of their employment? How much confidence does that give to those staff who work hard to ensure we have a fully functioning airport? Well, let me tell you, it doesn't make them feel secure, or like their work matters, especially this late in the budget season. And there's one more thing that I need to address. It's this conflict of interest business that folks keep raising around my position on the city council. First, there was the conflict of interest raised about my work with the homeless population and working community services, and somehow I have a conflict of interest in trying to help homeless people not be criminally charged for being homeless. Secondly, related to the airport, someone brought up that I have a conflict of interest related to the airport vote. This was brought to my attention, that someone feared I may be influenced or pushed to vote for the county on this. Two things I have to say. God forbid that I would have my own mind, my thoughts, my beliefs, the data, the community input, to make my own decisions on this issue. But also, I have integrity, and I would not be influenced to vote for something I don't agree with. Debbie Erickson, our new county administrator, she also has integrity and would not ask me to do that. And you know what? Our county board has integrity, and they would not be asking me to do something like that. I find this conflict of interest thing to be quite entertaining and interesting, as I have been the only one questioned on my conflicts of interest when we have sitting council members who own small businesses within the, within the city, and no one has questioned their ability to make recommendations or to vote on anything having to do with small business in the community. There's a member of council who has a wife who is employed by funds from the city of Brainerd, and I haven't heard any questions of conflict of interest on her. No offense to anyone.
I have abstained from every visit Brainerd vote since I've been on the council.
And I get that, but nobody has brought forward this.
Let Caro finish.
No one has brought forward any conflict of interest questions on anybody else except me. So, I just want to clarify, I have no conflict of interest for this airport vote, and I do not agree with setting the levy for the airport at the thousand dollars. It's too late in the game, it's ridiculous, it does need to be solved, yes, indeed, but let's take a more planful approach to doing so with the 2025 year ahead of us, and having that discussion in a thoughtful and planful matter, and not have a pissing contest with the county board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. I have a motion when you're ready. This item is about the 2025 operating budget and levy. And so Connie's looking for direction. We could go as low as a point three-seven. We could go up to four, which was presented tonight.
We're not going to move on this until the sixteenth.
She's got to have a budget prepared on the sixteenth, right? You want some direction on what to have in the packet on the sixteenth or not?
It would be nice, yes.
Okay. All right, but we could change it again.
We could change it again, but then she'll at least be presenting what she knows at one, at one point in time, something we wanted, right?
Perfect. So, you got it.
Can I make a motion? Let's, let's make a motion. I would move to direct Connie to set the budget, the levy increase at two percent, and take that hundred thirteen thousand dollars of fund balance and leave it in fund balance, as was recommended in one of the options, an ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by O'Day. Let's talk about comments on the motion only for now. Any comments on the two percent?
Could you just explain how that's being used again?
It's just a, it's just to set it. So Connie has direction of where to set it for the December sixteenth. It's not actually setting the, when we make, it's not actually setting the levy amount.
Well, there, there is some direction there.
Yeah, there is some, there is some direction there.
If you wouldn't mind, repeat the motion, if you would, please.
Yeah, so it's two percent increase and putting that hundred thirteen thousand dollars that we were going to use back into fund balance, and that is money from last year, where we increased the levy more than we needed, because we weren't certain how expensive the compensation study was going to cost us. This is that money that's essentially left over, was not needed to implement the compensation plan. Initially, we were going to use it in the 2025 budget. Connie really wants it to go into fund balance. So-
Sounds like you do.
So, as a two-
Our finance director recommends it.
Not judging Connie, don't worry.
That's a two-
Just an option.
That's a two percent levy increase.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, and this is not setting the levy, this is just telling Connie what to come back with on the sixteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to make, want to make that very clear. Any other comments? I mean, I, this is fantastic, but I mean, I think we're probably, if we do this, I'm hesitant to say I will support it on the sixteenth, because I think there's probably a few other things that should be put back in there. I would tend to think we should be more at about three and a half percent, but for now, I, I mean, since we've changed this many times over the last few days, I'll certainly support it now. Mr. Bredow?
Of course you, of course you believe that there are things we could find money to spend.
New pink shirts for everybody, and shoes that-
Make more cookies.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes. Now, let's go back to Connie's discussion. Was there any more comments on that?
Do you need any more direction, Connie?
Need any more direction? Okay, any more comments? Okay, then let's, let's move on to, where are we? Eight?
Yeah, end of report here.
Yeah, thank you. We are on eight unfinished business, eight A call for applicants. We'll turn it over to the Honorable Mayor Bredow.
Thank you, President Beavons. Before my call for applicants, I would like to give a nomination. I would like to nominate one, Mary Cope, for the library board.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek, to put Mary Cope back on the library board. Welcome, Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor Bredow.
Hopefully, they put her on the radio ads. We have recommendate, or we have, excuse me, we have the following positions available on the following commissions. The airport commission, one term expiring 2027, charter commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026, three terms expiring 2028. That sounds like basically the entire charter commission. Housing redevelopment authority, one term expiring 2029, the transportation advisory committee, four terms expiring 2026, as well as the EDA, the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2026. Oh, excuse me, park and recreation, one term expiring 2029, public utilities commission, one term expiring 2029 as well. Those are new.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I have three terms for the, or three positions open on the planning commission, one term to expire in 2026, two terms to expire in 2027, and I would like to make a recommendation for Justin, I don't wish to mispronounce his last name, is it?
Grisula.
Grisula, to the planning commission.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Chesick, for Justin, for the planning commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Justin and Mary. Next up is item eight B, consider expediting the IT integration workshop. This is Mr. Broyles, our city administrator. What would you like to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. The integration work group met on November twenty-fifth of, of this year, just last month, and recommends expediting the joint workshop between city council and the commission to specifically discuss and consider integrating the IT, the two IT departments. Integration work group also recommended that the meeting be held sooner rather than later. Thursday, December nineteenth is a date that staff is suggesting. However, the date can be changed based on the availability of the council and the commission members. So, staff would recommend a motion to expedite and schedule a joint workshop between the city council and the public utility commission for December nineteenth at six P M. to discuss and consider integration of city side and public utilities into one IT department.
So moved. Second. Motion by Chesick, second by Johnson, and this will eliminate then the February IT workshop, correct?
Yep.
So, that needs to be part of the motion, to cancel that one and add this one.
Hopefully, approve the nineteenth of December as the workshop between the public utilities and city council, and to remove the date of February tenth as our pre-approved plan.
Accepted.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine is new business. Item nine A is considering an interim use permit renewal for the short-term rental at five oh-two Juniper Street. James Kramvik, our community development director, anything you'd like to add to what's in the packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, Michael Fish has applied for renewal of a short-term rental at five oh-two Juniper Street. The property owners have been operating the short-term rental for a year, and staff has received no issues. No one showed up to the public hearing with any concerns. Planning commission considered this request at their meeting on November twentieth, and unanimously recommended approval of the IUP with staff's conditions. Staff recommends approval of the IUP with the following conditions. The interim use permit shall terminate on twelve thirty-one of 2026. So, since they had it for a year, this is a two-year renewal per zoning code. Upon sale or transfer of the property, the interim use permit is no longer valid, and submittal of the city of Brainerd monthly lodging tax form, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to approve the interim, move to approve by-
Johnson.
I'm sorry, it was down here on this end.
It was Jeff and then Mike.
Chesick, second by Mike O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is item nine B, considering a interim use permit renewal for short-term rental at five twenty-four North Eighth Street. Mr. Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Ms. Nita Gross has applied for renewal of a short-term rental at five twenty-four North Eighth Street. The property owners have been operating the short-term rental for nearly a year, and there have been, again, no issues with this short-term rental. The planning commission considered this at their last meeting, and unanimously recommended approval of the IUP request with staff's conditions. So, staff does recommend approval of the interim use permit request with staff's recommended conditions.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Move to approve. Chesick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to item nine, new business. Nine C is consideration of an interim use permit renewal for a short-term rental at two oh-three Hawkins Drive. Mr. Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Saffey and Ms. Durasamo have applied for renewal of their IUP for a short-term rental at two oh-three Hawkins Drive. The property owners have been operating this short-term rental shortly over one year, and there have been, again, no issues with this short-term rental. Planning commission considered this request at their last meeting, and unanimously recommended approval of the IUP. So, staff recommends approval of the IUP request with staff's recommendations. The one difference with this one is continuing with the recommendation of allowing two off, or would be on-street parking spots for this one. That was brought up as a concern about a year ago from, from neighboring properties. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Chairman Johnson?
One question. I noticed this property was listed on the market, I don't know, this summer or something. Did they end up not selling it? Are these the same two individuals that initially acquired the IUP?
They are, yep. They ended up not selling it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to approve. Move by Chesick.
Second.
Is there a second? By Stingline, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Item nine D is consideration of a conditional use permit for a brew pub at the Last Turn Saloon, two one-four South Eighth Street. Mr. Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Ed Mattson, on behalf of Mattson Properties LLC, has submitted a request for a conditional use permit to operate a brew, brew pub at the Last Turn Saloon. The planning commission considered this request at their last meeting, and unanimously recommended approval with staff's conditions. Staff is recommending one additional condition as a result of a question that came up from the commission. The primary discussion at the meeting centered around if odors would emanate from the building. The applicant, in his application, did not believe there would be an issue, and has experienced the operators operating Yashir kombucha, so is familiar with the fermentation process as well as any odors emanating. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Prior to the brewery operation, the building officials shall perform inspection to ensure no odors from the brewery are precipitable beyond the property line. And number two, which is added, a recommendation from staff is the brew pub shall be properly ventilated, so no odors associated with brewing process shall not be precipitable beyond the property line. With that, I can answer any questions. The applicant was unavailable. An issue came up at the planning commission, but he is here now, if you do have any questions from him, and I can certainly answer any other questions.
Perfect. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Mr. Chesick.
Are there any sound concerns about this operation?
No sound concerns.
Any other questions of staff? Chairman Johnson.
What happens if in two years, somebody complains about an odor crossing the property line?
So, we'd have to review it from a building perspective to see if there's any type of significant issues with it. By putting it actually in the conditions, you can actually revoke a conditional use permit then. Right now, it's in the allowed use section as one of the requirements, so you could find, you know, a potential property owner from that. But being that it's in the conditions, obviously, first, we try to remedy the situation. If that's, if it, if, you know, an applicant's unwilling to do that, then we have to go down the road of potentially revoking.
Thank you.
I'm not concerned that there are. I just wanted to hear the answer.
Well, and he's already brewing right next door.
Okay.
And there hasn't been a complaint for-
You can't talk from the audience. I'm sorry.
Thanks for the answer.
Mr.- We got it. Mr.- Mr. O'Day is next, and you?
Yeah, is there a way to measure smell?
Don't believe so. Been through this.
There was, okay.
Yes, there is. We, we had this presentation previously, and there-
Does the smell measure?
Oh, it is a gun that smells things. We were presented that at one point. And it was a stick gun, yes.
Okay, good. That's all I wanted to know.
Mr. Chesick.
I just want to wish these folks the best of luck in their endeavor.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Hearing none. Staff is recommending the approval of the conditional use permit.
Second Johnson.
Motion by Chesick, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is new business, letter E, consideration of a conditional use permit and variance for a mixed-use building at seven twenty-two Laurel Street. Mr. Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Dave Perringer has submitted a request for a CUP to convert the main floor of commercial building into two commercial units, currently Bob and Franz, and the second floor into seven apartment units. The variance request is from the parking requirements, partially some of the new requirements from the off-street parking ordinance, which would require seven units. So, this property has seven units of additional housing and one additional commercial space. So, with the addition, the owner would be required to have parking onsite or obtain leases for eight spaces. The applicant is requesting a variance due to being a historic structure that's built out to the property lines, and certainly historic structures unavailable to provide the underground parking. So, with that, the planning commission and the public had some concerns regarding the variance request. One business owner contacted myself, concerned that the tenants may park in his private parking lot. Staff did include a condition within the variance request to help alleviate this concern. The BN Credit Union showed up to the public hearing, had some concerns about generally, generally in parking, potential for dogs, and then grills and lawn chairs outside of the apartments. Mr. Perringer was online and stated that the dogs are not allowed in his downtown apartments, nor are outside accessory items allowed, and that he has had a lot of experience in professionally maintaining his downtown properties and has had no issues. The planning commission considered the concerns and unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit, and recommended approval of the variance request with the following conditions. Tenants are prohibited from parking in parking lot facilities without approval from the property owner. Number two, the applicant will apply for four spaces in the alley parking lot with the city of Brainerd, and secure a lease when they become available. And then, from, because there's a CUP and a variance, staff does recommend making these as separate motions, and with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff?
I have one.
Yeah, Mr. O'Day. Chairman O'Day.
The alley parking lot with it, with the city, that's one of our parking lots?
It's one of our parking lots, so that's the one that would, you know, really be used if a resident, you know, if one becomes available, it's one that would be used. It's kind of along the Laurel Street parking lot, along that alley area there. Our other parking lots have availability. If the tenants want to get a space there, they, there's certainly availability, but it's a lot further. You have the Maple Street one down by the library, and then the Burlington Northern Parking Lot. So, availability if they want them, but not requiring Mr. Perringer to, to provide leases there.
So, if they, if they were to obtain a lease in a different lot, they could use that as opposed to one from our lot? Either way is okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, so we're looking at two motions. The first one is staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for seven twenty-two Laurel Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And the second item on this is staff is recommending approval of the variance request for seven twenty-two Laurel Street with the two following, two attached conditions. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline. Is there a second? Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chesick? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is item 10, public forum. Time, it is 7, 9:20. I will open the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We usually ask you to keep it to three to five minutes. If you are online and wish to participate, uh, star three notifies us that you are wanting to speak and star six will unmute you.
Mr. Bevins, can I make a motion and turn the heat up?
Nope.
It is a little chilly in here.
Public forum.
I'm getting cold, I think.
I'll ask for a second call for public forum. And I'll ask for a third and final call for public forum. And I will close the public forum at 9:21. We'll move on to staff reports. We'll start on my right to Fire Chief Holmes.
Nothing to add, thank you.
All right, act, ah, acting chief for us tonight, Tony Reddy. Anything from the IT GIS department?
Not tonight.
Online, I think we've got our HRA Director Sharpton here. Anything to add tonight?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Connie Hillman, our finance director. Mike Habegorst, our public works director. James Kramvik, our community development director.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items here. Uh, so just want to note the Thrifty White is scheduled for demolition on December 9th.
Why, why, they were talking?
Uh, the Thrifty White Building Downtown is scheduled for demolition December 9th. Um, so that's, uh, building permits been issued, so something to make the council aware of. Um, obviously moving closer towards potential construction of 805. Uh, Country Manor is requesting additional tax abatement and the EDA will be reviewing and providing a recommendation to city council at the next, uh, EDA meeting. Um, and then finally, the planning commission at the next meeting will be conducting a public hearing, uh, regarding the design standards and mixed-use potential on Washington Street. And then we'll begin working on a crypto ordinance. And that's everything I have.
Thank you. Mr. Lengel, our city attorney?
Can I ask him a question?
Mr. Kram. And, do you need it to be tonight?
Um, well, he did mention it, the tax abatement from, uh, Country Manor. We've, we've already given him a tax abatement, correct?
Yeah, so, so the original tax abatement was, I, I don't have the exact number, 700 something thousand at 10%, or at 45% over 10 years, uh, based on some of their projected numbers, which will be in the EDA packet. Um, interest rates have certainly gone up from their original request as well as, as construction costs. So they are going to be requesting additional tax abatement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lengel, our city attorney, anything?
The Robert's property is scheduled to close day after tomorrow.
Yeah, it is.
Well, that a holiday?
You know, it's not, it's not nice when Mr. Lengel gives his first and only report in 15 years and every single one of us laughs. That's, that's got to be a little hurtful.
He is smiling though, look at that.
I understand. HR Director Schubert. And Chris Evans, our public utilities director. Thank you. And Mr. Broyles, our city administrator.
No, sir.
Nothing to add? My goodness, we need to go back to that, that taxation report. All right, next up is the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Yeah, I'll go quick tonight. I just want to thank everyone for coming out on Saturday for the downtown small business Saturday, the hometown holiday. Uh, it was cold. It was very, very cold. So we kept it brief, but there was a, a very nice crowd for the tree lighting ceremony. I hear rumblings that maybe next year we are going to redecorate the tree with some new things, hopefully. So I think, uh, that probably has dollars attached to it. So I'm sure there'll be a request at some point for some kind of funding for something along those lines. But I want to just thank everyone involved, including the Parks Department, for getting that tree up and going and keeping it going because that's our big problem. We get it all put together, then the squirrels eat it and then we light it and it only does half of it. So we've learned our lesson, check it, check it, check it, check it, check it. And so I just want to thank specifically Troy for coming down and being there on Saturday and make sure that baby was running. You guys were checking that up until like five minutes before. So when I flip those switches, they go and we know it goes.